All right, thanks for patiently waiting, but now we're ready to move forward. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Village of Skokie Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning board of appeals is created by the statutes of the state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the Village of Skokie for the purpose granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have a case interest in a case either as a petitioner or as a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition or as an independent witness will be given a chance to speak on the record and to express his or her points of view. The zoning board of appeals is not a court of law and therefore we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and of the admissibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Counsel Tyler Kobelski and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require covenant running with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department, and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Counsel at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant running with the land is required, it cannot or will not be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the zoning board of appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits or certificates of occupancy can be issued until the covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied or should a covenant not be required, the board of trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuance due to lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our full complement is nine members, however, tonight's complement is seven members making four votes necessary to make a determination on a petition. Tonight, we have one case, 2025-03Z 8950 East Prairie Road. In this particular matter, I will ask Corporation Counsel, has proper notice been served and notarized?
Yes, notice is proper and correct.
All right, great, thank you very much. Before we get into having my vice chair Nick Worth present the case for tonight, we do have in our packet the minutes of our previous meeting, which was from May 7th, in which we heard two cases, 2025-02Z 7656 Crawford and 2025-04Z 511 Nestus Avenue. Both happened to be, the motion to grant, both petitioner's requests were passed. So if everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, all right, very good. Commissioner Jacobson makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second on this? Okay, very good. Commissioner Putrus, everybody in approval, just simple voice vote, please. Aye. Anybody say no? No? Okay. Thank you, Marlene, as always. Okay, great. Since we have so many people here tonight, under normal circumstances, I swear people in individually, but all of those of you who will be speaking at the podium tonight, if you would all please rise so I could swear you in en masse. Okay. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief? Please answer in the affirmative. Okay, anybody not answering the affirmative? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right, we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with the presentation of tonight's case, 2025-03Z. If the petitioner or the petitioner's representative would like to come up to the podium, Commissioner Worth will go ahead and present the case, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General information, this location, as we said, 8950 East Prairie Road. And the request tonight is a variation in order to construct an attached garage addition resulting in a five-foot front yard. The zoning requirement is a 25-foot minimum front yard, and the ZBA previously approved a reduced front yard. The existing zoning and land use, it's a R1 single-family detached residence and bordered on the north, south, east, and west, also by R1 single-family detached residences. The house was built in 1956 after the approval of two variations, one for lot size and one for front setback, and the site does not abut a public alley. Petitioner is requesting a variation in order to construct a one-story attached garage and room addition resulting in a five-foot front yard rather than the 25-foot minimum. And should this be approved, the petitioner will need to submit architectural drawings and appear before the appearance commission, like I said, if this request is approved. Staff analysis and recommendation? Hold up, hold on that.
Yeah, let's hold off on that.
You got?
That being said, though, we have, we have in front of us that was submitted to us that, not within the packet itself, but prior to the meeting tonight. And since it's not a part of the electronic packet that people can see online, this document has to be read into the record. So Nick, please go ahead and proceed with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just going to read it into the record as part of my remarks, but it's up to you.
Good.
I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
Corporation counsel.
He's going to do it later, let's just do it later.
Okay. In that case, sir, yeah, you can, we'll go ahead and when you decide to come up to the podium to make your statement, we'll go ahead and we'll have it read in at that time. Okay. Let's see. Why don't we go ahead and read? Yeah, let's just go ahead and go with that.
Okay. This is the petitioner's statement. With limited space on the lot and no parking facility available for their two vehicles, the property owners seek to provide a basic need on this lot, a two-car attached garage. Various attached and detached garages were considered, as was a carport option. However, all that would see a reasonable use of the property and provide reasonable accessibility to the home required zoning relief. The existing home is about 2,000 square feet and the small attached garage project will also provide a much-needed mudroom for the home. While the mudroom is completely zoning compliant, the garage will encroach into the north front yard setback of 16 feet. With a masonry knee wall and vinyl siding to match the existing home, the project has been designed to closely mirror the existing residence, and the addition has been located behind the house in order to maintain the integrity of the front elevation. This addition, if approved, would help modernize this home and property and allow the owners to locate their vehicles off the heavily trafficked feeder road East Prairie that has seen some near misses in the past due to the volume and speed of passing vehicles.
I think that'll be adequate.
Okay.
This other stuff, I think, will come out in testimony.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. O'Donoghue, thank you.
May we have your name and spell it for the record, please?
My name is Andrew Venimore, V E N A M O R E, 602 Academy Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Okay, great. Now, you were sworn in earlier, so. Before I move forward with your statement and your discussion on this matter of why we're here tonight, you're, everything that we're talking about here, the petitioners are totally, totally good with you presenting the request on.
They are, and they're here as well, if there's any question to that.
You're good. Okay, all right. Mr. Venimore, then please move forward with why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, can you go to the proposed? We have before you this evening to discuss the proposed project of adding a small two-car garage addition to the rear of this existing house that has a mudroom also attached to it. The property currently affords the homeowner no parking whatsoever, there's nothing, there's no open parking, there's nothing whatsoever. And the owners are currently parking essentially right in front of this curved access. The front door of the house is there, so the vehicles sort of logically sit here. That's the easiest access point to the house as it's currently designed. There's also a door on the back here that's out the kitchen. So essentially, the vehicles are parking on the street and accessing the front of the garage through that curved front walkway. As part of the project, the intention is also to construct a mudroom, like I mentioned, that the current home lacks on the first floor. The area of the square footage on the first floor is rather compartmentalized, and as you enter in the front door, everything just gets dumped in the way of traffic as it moves around to a family room on one side and the kitchen on the other. And so there's just not a lot of congregational space there to remove coats, jackets, things like that. So the idea behind the garage is obviously to, for the owners, the ability to park their vehicles in a safer location than what they're currently exposed to at the moment. And then subsequent to that, coming through the back of the garage through a mudroom into the kitchen area. So the variation, as was just identified, is reducing the front yard setback, the requirement of 16 feet, from 16 feet down to five feet. The existing house is fractionally short of that. Obviously, the intention when it was built in the first place was to meet the 16-foot setback. At the moment, it is just a little bit less than that, at 15.27, I think that is. So as you can see there, we are locating the garage 20 foot wide, 22 foot deep. The front yard, existing front yard setback is 15 foot some, and the reduction is going to be down to five feet. The side yard is, would be typically less than eight foot, but there is a sewer main running through this eight-foot public utilities meant that Public Works identified, and so there's obviously no possibility of encroaching into that setback. So while this is obviously a large reduction, down from 16 to five, this reflects the difficulty of the nature of this particular lot, a corner lot, but also a very irregularly shaped corner lot. So the location of getting the vehicles into the garage access through the extension of Lake Street was the one that made the most sense. As I mentioned in the petitioner's statement, we looked at a variety of different options, including the homeowner's initial request was to locate a garage on the side here. But obviously, that would have compressed the front yard setback even more and would have not been practical to get any vehicles in there at all. So the goal was to ensure that access to any attached structure was through a safer condition than what's being faced now. Not sure if any of you have been up and down East Prairie, but traffic really does move pretty quickly, obviously well past typical, the typically signed speed limits. So the idea is to get the vehicles away from East Prairie and have them access through Lake Street. So while the north property line is defined as the front yard, it effectively exists if you go to the property, you walk the property, it effectively exists as the home's side yard because the access, the front door of the house is on East Prairie. So anybody that walks up there thinks, oh, the front of the property is on East Prairie, that's the front yard. You know, the side, the existing side yard on both sides is what sort of occupies people's thoughts. So it seems as though it's, you know, being accessed from the side yard, but from a zoning standpoint, certainly that's not the case. It is unfortunately a front yard setback as well off Lake Street. In addition, while the setback is being reduced here down to five feet, the parkway in this particular case, it's a little odd, it's probably roughly another 20 feet there. So while the, certainly the defined zoning setback is being reduced to five feet, there's still a reasonable amount of space here where the garage will be offset from the street. Now, again, that's not the, that's not the required setback. Obviously, the setback's being identified by the property line, the north property line. But for all, like, intents and purposes, there is still a, there's going to be a reasonable setback from the street. The, as part of the process, the homeowners have chatted with the owners, sorry, the owners, the neighbors who are here this evening. There's been a whole bunch of discussion about how to orient the driveway here. The initial concern was that the driveway was too wide in this location. It would have an impact on the area here, which is where the cumulative homes that feed off this dead-end portion of Lake Street leave their trash bins. So the driveway was narrowed to 16 foot wide, which is essentially the width of the overhead door, which will work to be able to get vehicles in and out. Typically, the driveways are usually extended to the width of the actual garage itself, but it certainly can exist and work by having the driveway just line up with the overhead door. So during the course of discussions with the neighbors, it was decided to narrow that driveway so it wouldn't have any bearing or any impact on the area of where the trash receptacles currently exist for all of those adjacent homes. So the hardship, I think, as you've probably heard from my explanations from our perspective, is tied to the very irregular nature of the lot, the triangle shape of the lot, in addition to the fact that there are two front yards here. It's, the lot's of a decent size. The zoning variation from 1957 allowed it to be smaller than what's permitted in the zoning district. But it is of a reasonable size when you look at the actual square footage number. But as you can see, a lot of the, a lot of the area of the lot exists down in the areas that aren't very practical, right? So if you add your front yard setback here and the easement on the side, there's very little space in, to locate anything that would be complying. So the idea was to get it, get the garage off East Prairie to be accessible from Lake Street, which is going to ultimately be safer for the homeowners. One thing, so while we certainly are reducing that front yard setback reasonably significantly down to five feet, it's interesting to note that based on the lot size, even with the addition of the garage and the mudroom at the back, that the, the building coverage is roughly 1,500 square feet less than what would be permitted. The impervious is over 1,750 square feet less than what would be allowed. And then the FAR is some 2,000 square feet less. So it's, the request is significant. I don't think there's any hiding behind that. But all of the other aspects of the case, all of the other zoning pieces of this puzzle are so much significantly less than what's permitted, that I think that there's a very good reason to consider going down this path. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has at this point.
Well, Mr. Venimore, thank you for your presentation. Before we go any further, though, at this point, I'd like to have Commissioner Worth give us his reflection.
Sure. Thank you. So familiar with the site, familiar with the area. Definitely, the, the fact that the garage would, you'd have an entrance off of Lake Street similar to the other houses, other residents along Lake Street, I mean, seems to, to be a reasonable request. You know, I know that we have a statement here that will be read into the record. So interested to hear what is on that. You know, it does seem like definitely a unique lot. And, you know, interested to hear what the rest of the folks in the, our neighbors in the audience are here to say.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with that. Yeah, geometrically, it almost, it's like a perfect right triangle, like flipped upside down, you know? So, so nothing else to say as of right now, then?
No, not at this point, thanks, Chair.
Okay, great. Then, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say? Sir, please go ahead and come on up to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
So let me make the intro.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, sir. Go ahead and make the introductions if you'd like.
Please interrupt me anytime I interrupt your protocol.
No, no, no.
I've never been before the zoning board of appeals, so please let me know. I'm trying to, I'm trying to play by your rules. I'm Al Rigoni, I'm directly across Lake Street.
Okay.
I own a rather large home there that I built, that is, I was the general contractor back in 1986, so I know something about building. It is a, there was a street vacation a few years ago, so it's, I have a very large amount of frontage of 103 feet once that street was vacated. So I have a very large house and a very large lot. But in essence, I am across that entire Lake Street area. So I introduce myself, this is Barbara Meyer, and these are my neighbors at 63 Williamsburg, who park, enter their garage from Lake Street. This is Rick Isaac and Linda Schwartz, his spouse. They are with me in support of opposition to this requested relief.
Okay. Mr. Rigoni, may you spell your last name so we have it for the record, please?
Sure, my full name is, first name is A L B E R T. The last name is R I G O N I, 3550 Lake Street. And it's the Skevinston area, so Evanston, or Evanston's the mailing address, but it's Skokie, as we all know.
Okay, great. Yeah, go ahead and then please, please continue.
So I've distributed to you our rebuttal to the findings of fact. Out of respect for your processes, we followed it point by point. It's a little awkward for laypeople to do that, but that's what we decided to do. If I may, as the preamble to reading that into the record, I would like to state four overarching themes in that presentation. One, the property is in the R1 district, the most restrictive residential district of the village. The requested relief is enormous, from the code required 25-foot setback down to five feet, an 80% reduction in code requirement. The petitioners have no basis to argue hardship. It is the petitioners who are initiating a significant change to the neighborhood. Four, a denial of the petition will cause no economic harm to the petitioner. I have lived there for 29 years, and this home has sold repeatedly, four or five times since I have been there. Now, let me start by responding or providing our rebuttal to the findings of fact, one by one. One, there is a limitation on the use of the property due to physical, topographical, and geological features. Our response, there is no limitation on the use of the property. For almost seven years, the property has been used as residential, consistent with the zoning codes and ordinances. When the property was originally developed, it was with two variances for lot size and front setback. It was those two variances that allowed the development due to the physical features of the property. The northwest corner of the existing home is currently set back 15 feet. So the property is already violative of the 25-foot setback for that north yard, the legal north yard. The proposed garage exacerbates this setback intrusion to only five feet rather than the 25 feet prescribed by zoning in the R1 zoning district. Two, without a variances, without a variance, there can be no reasonable use of the property. The property is currently, and for the last seven years, a residential use. Without the variance, the property will continue its residential use. The petitioner purchased the property knowing there was no garage. Three, the request is not based solely on economic reasons. There was nothing in the, in the other statements, and we have none there. Four, the property owner did not create the necessity for the variance. The petitioners purchased the property in January of 2024. The property has not been modified since the purchase, to my knowledge. At the time of the purchase, the petitioner should have known the limitations on the use and/or expansion of the property. The lot is very irregular, has never had a garage, and abuts East Prairie Road, which is apparent to us all. Five, the request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. For almost 70 years, the property has been residential without a garage or onsite property. The property as it currently exists is a reasonable use of the property. The lack of a garage does not eliminate the reasonable use of the property. Six, the request will not be injurious to public health, safety, or welfare. If the variance is granted, it will adversely affect the welfare of. If the variance is granted, it will adversely affect the welfare of other properties on Lake Street. In two thousand and eighteen, Lake Street was constructed using a special assessment process. At the time of the improvement, three of the property owners of budding Lake Street were assessed approximately a total of thirty-five thousand dollars to be paid over a ten-year period. The petitioner's property was not included in that assessment. It being determined that they were receiving uh no benefit from the improvement by the engineering department. If the petitioner's request is granted, they would be benefiting without having shared in the cost of the street. I would like to acknowledge that in our meeting, the petitioners have offered to contribute an unspecified amount for the remaining three years of the assessment. Seven, the subject site possesses one or more unique characteristics, generally not applicable to similarly situated properties. The petitioners wish to increase the size of the existing building footprint by approximately five hundred ninety-six square feet, which is a fifty-nine percent increase to the existing footprint. The linear footage on the north side of the proposed development almost doubles ninety-two percent from twenty-four feet to over forty-four feet. So the facade facing my house will be substantial. Lake Street, uh, excuse me, the driveway would be forty-eight feet long from the front of the garage to the existing curb of Lake Street. Lake Street itself is only twenty-four feet wide. So that gives you an idea as to the substantial enormity of this driveway. I acknowledge that the petitioners, as the builder said from our meeting, reduced the width of the driveway from the original twenty feet down to uh that's currently proposed sixteen feet. In summation, the setback variance sought from twenty-five feet down to five feet is extreme. Incidentally, I mentioned that I built my home back in eighty-six. At that time, the village was adamant on the twenty-five foot setback when my home was built in nineteen eighty-six. And it was in fact built to that standard. The proposed development would destroy sixteen feet of Lake Street curb, which was just built in two thousand and eighteen. My two neighbors and I are still paying for that curb and street improvement. Also, there is the issue of landscaping. There is a very large tree to the west of the proposed development, which the neighbors at both sixty-three and sixty-four Williamsburg are concerned about. The petitioner's contractor has indicated that twenty-five percent of the tree roots would be disturbed by the construction of the garage. The existing landscape screen, eight-foot-high bushes along Lake Street would be destroyed by at least sixteen foot, the the sixteen-foot width of the driveway, if not more, due to the construction activities. The petitioners have options to develop the garage on the south side of the property. This came in very late today, and I apologize. I'll provide a revised last sheet. We have provided the board a sketch done to scale by an architect, showing the garage to the south of the home. This still allows adequate green space to the south of the garage. Also, in the application state, uh uh petitioners have stated that they congregate on the south side of the property. The green space left south of the garage would still allow for this, and it was also possible then for the family to congregate on the vacant legal front yard on the north side of the property. As to safety, uh homeowners previous have parked their cars on Lake Street. Uh, these residents choose not to do so. Uh, the south side of Lake Street, there is never any car, parked cars in there. So that's one thing on safety. And I would also point out that there are numerous garages on East Prairie Road, which are accessed off of East Prairie Road. One immediately south and abutting the tip of the triangle. And then two more just on the other side of the entrance to Williamsburg Village. My point in telling you this is access onto East Prairie Road is common from uh church to Dumpster Street. And the traffic is more than a typical residential street, but believe me, it's not Dumpster Street. Finally, it may be viewed by some that for corner lots, there should be more flexibility with regard to setback requirements. I'm not an attorney, but I reviewed the zoning code, and there is no language, none in the zoning code exempting corner lots from setback requirements. If the variance is approved, the setbacks for this property would be five feet on the north side parentheses, front yard. And the existing setback from the front door to East Prairie Road is only sixteen point six eight feet per the builder survey. My point is rules should be applied equally and uniformly. We respectfully request that the requested variance be denied. I don't know if the other folks wanna wanna say anything?
Wait, please stand, come up to the microphone, sir.
Uh, my name's Rick Isaac.
Okay.
Sixty-three Williamsburg Road.
Could could spell your name, sir, so we may have it for the record?
Richard M. Isaac.
Okay, spell.
Um, the uh- I'm sorry?
They want you to spell your name.
I S A A C.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Go ahead and proceed.
Um, the, the pro- the, the green space uh next to Lake Street is significant in that it borders a green space that the three properties opposite them um sit on. If you put a driveway in that area, you affection- effectively um break up a large section of that green space and make it asphalt. Um, and I, I think that how our neighbors view the the look of the land around us is important. The other thing that um nothing, no consideration has been given to either moving the garage on the south side of the house away from what the area that we're talking about now. And making it not two cars, but one car as most of the uh garages in the area have anyway. So I think there are options available that don't disturb to the look of the neighborhood and still of uh of um allow for parking. Um, and uh I wanna uh also remind people that parking on Lake Street is common by all of our previous neighbors. And um, there's no other traffic uh on that street other than very slow driving people parking in their garages or s- uh Skokie vehicles servicing garbage. So I think there's, there are options available without disrupting the look of the neighborhood and without um adding a huge amount of ge- asphalt.
Uh, if, if I may, Mr. Isaac.
If I may, Mr. Isaac, uh, you're at sixty-three Williamsburg. Could, could you uh point out um on that map which, which residence is yours?
The sidewalk with the S uh front walk, not the, yeah, that one.
Oh, okay, very good. Okay. I just wanted to see, you know, where exactly you, you live in that, how that would be, you know, you would be impacted by this request. Um, I, I'm looking at this huge tree that seems to be on the petitioner's property. That I believe that's the tree in question.
Correct.
Um, right, so.
Brian?
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah, please, ma'am, step on up. Um, your, your name and spell it real-
Linda Schwartz, L I N D A S C H W A R T Z.
Okay, and you live at sixty-three Williamsburg as well?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
That tree is massive. It was probably there before there were any homes. It's huge. And I'm very concerned about green space, as we should all be, especially with the weather we're having. And we need these big trees to absorb all the water and stop the flooding that Skokie used to be notorious for. Um, and it's just huge. And I think even if twenty-five percent, and I'm not an arborist or anything, but if twenty-five percent of those um roots get, die, that tree's gonna go. And it is massive, and it is absolutely beautiful. Uh, Rick and I are actually nursing two of our trees, and we pay a lot of money for hormone treatments on them so that we can keep them and not have to cut them down because it's just in this day and age, it's, it's not a thing you should do. Um, the other thing that actually bothered me was it went in the builder's petition where he said they want to put in a small garage. It's not a small garage. It's a two-car garage. And that, and I'm a former realtor, and the look is, it's almost as big as the house, the width of the house. It's only two feet shorter or four feet shorter than the house. And the one thing we want to keep in Skokie is we want to keep our green space. We want to keep everything looking nice because that's what keeps our property values up. And I just think it's too, I just think it's way too big for the property. And yes, I agree with everybody else that there is, there are options, um, other options for them. Thank you.
Brian, a quick question with this um survey here. Why doesn't the property extend to the curb on the north side? It has a dotted line. What is that empty space?
Well, the space north of the dotted line is Parkway.
But it's basically, I mean-
This is vil- this is Village Parkway.
Does anyone hang out there or?
It's always been that way, and I might add, when uh Rick and I were the primary movers working with the engineering department to put in the formal street, and those bushes are so lo- so nice that we, and, and, and that green space is so nice, and predecessor owners used to use it, that we beg the engineering department to limit the construction of the street to twenty-four feet so that those bushes and the bush line was not impacted. And our neighbors were not impacted. In essence, it gives them a very nice-
Yeah.
-front yard. So I tell you this because we are sympathetic to our neighbors and try to be friendly. And that gives you an instance specifically where we took them um into concern uh to save their front yard, save the bush line. And after all, there's only four or five of us using that street. Engineering agreed, and they, and it's less asphalt, they built the street to a twenty-four-foot width. Uh, just to remind everybody, uh, a normal village street is sixty-six feet in width. So um, this little street is substantially reduced. And uh, that's how that area, uh, if you will, uh, survived. But that is public right-of-way, and had the village engineering department wanted, they could have extended the street or built the street into that right-of-way um legally.
Interesting.
I hope I didn't-
Nope.
Confuse things or drone on, drone on. I mean, I wanted to give you a little history.
Just great. One point of correction, a normal right-of-way is sixty-six feet wide. The street widths are not sixty-six.
That, that, that's correct, Brian. I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mislead.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mr. Rigoni, one, one last thing be- before you step away from the podium. Your house is the house that's directly north.
Correct, that's the house.
Right, so your, your driveway is the one that empties out on the Lake Street?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And just to give you the proportions, I do have a three-car garage, ironically. I know they have no garage. I have a three-car garage. Um, but as I indicated, uh, my driveway's about twenty, uh, twenty-seven foot in width, but I have a hundred and three feet of frontage. So proportionally, you can see it doesn't look strange, and uh it just, um, you know, I, I, I think it looks pretty good. I'm very proud of my landscaping and my garage doors.
Look, look, looks pretty good for a forty-year-old house, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, in- interestingly enough, in that particular uh photo that Brian just had on there, there, there's a couple cars that look like they're actually parked on Lake Street.
Yeah, I would say that that does not happen very often. That those spaces are typically available uh to, historically with predecessor owners of the petition, the, prior to the petitioners. They, they, it very commonly, whether they walked out the back door or what, I don't know. But they very commonly would park their cars there, which is no problem. It's very rarely used uh by guests of any of our homes. I mean, so that is available. Uh, I know the couple has children. If they're concerned about safety, that's, that's a, that's a no-build option. Again, what I presented to you was an architectural build on the south of the home.
Right. And then uh, and then actually, since Brian has this perspective up, we're looking directly in our viewpoint towards a garage. Is that, is that the garage that belongs to Mr. Isaac?
Yes, it is.
Sixty-three Williamsburg? Okay, okay.
That is Mr. Isaac's home.
Right.
That is his garage.
Okay.
And this, if you will, is the uh vacated street, which allowed Mr. Isaac to build that garage.
Okay.
And again, for the record, I did not oppose that vacation, nor did I oppose him building the garage. So I don't want the board to think that I'm negative on anybody trying to do things on their properties.
Yeah, right. No, absolutely. No, the, the, the reason why I brought that up was it gives us a little bit more clarity as to how exactly uh Mr. Isaac is affected by this request. Seeing that how his garage actually empties out on the-
It's, it's a very, it's, there's, there's one other resident between the petitioner's residence and uh Mr. Isaacs and Ms. Schwartz. Um, and uh, right in that, so it's a very low-volume street. Yeah, you can see-
Right.
I should explain, the, the village engineering department um built this in order for the trucks and some cars. You see the red sign. Some cars think it's a through street so that people can pull in and, and reverse and back out. And it became a very neat area for the petitioners, this family and the Isaacs to uh, to keep their, all of their cans. I have an alley on the north side of my home, so I use that. Uh, these are, none of these cans are mine. These are those three homes.
Okay.
And so, um, I, I give them credit when they reduced the uh driveway by twenty feet down to twenty. Uh, they, they, that twenty-two-foot driveway would have uh cut through this, this corner and therefore interrupted this setup here.
Got it. Okay.
I hope I rounded things out for everybody.
Uh, I, I think, I think you fleshed things out rather well. Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry if I went over-
No, 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 that, that's all right. You're certainly entitled, you were entitled to notice on this. And, you know, you're very well presenting, you know, the reasons why you're not in favor of the petitioner's request. So, you know, you have every right to say what you want to say. Uh, yeah, Mr. Isaac.
I just wanna add, if, right now, there are um three driveways in relatively close to each other. This would add a fourth driveway, and if you look at the the, the shot that sho- uh shows, yeah. If th- that, those two driveways and Mr. Rigoni's uh driveway on the, on the right side, that's off the picture, right there. Yeah. You have access to three different properties very close to each other. A fourth driveway increases the opportunity for people who, if people don't stay on the driveway, if they're sticking out in the street. Um, if there's uh parties and you have multiple um people coming to park, a fourth driveway might create lots of problems for the neighbors.
Good.
Thank you.
So just one comment to kinda go off that last comment. The engineering division reviewed the requests, had no objections to the request, and actually preferred the drive, uh, any proposed driveway- any proposed driveway off the site to Lake Street due to East Prairie being a heavy, you know, you know, heavier traffic street than, you know, so of the, of the two, of the options, you know, engineering division preferred Lake Street more so for the fact that, you know, because it is less traveled, there's less traffic on it.
Brian, I didn't see that in the record, so if engineering sent you a memo to that effect, it ought to be, it should have been put into the record.
They had no objections to the request.
All right, after that presentation by Mr. Ragoni, does anybody have any questions for either the, Mr. Vandemore, he has something you'd like to say?
I just have a couple qualifications on the neighbors' concerns. Brian, can you go back? Can you walk down the street? So I know there's been a lot, the go-to, the one where we saw that, at the end of the cul-de-sac or the end of the street. So there's been a lot of notations from the neighbors as it relates to that particular tree. So the, the foundation of the new garage is going to be about seventeen feet from the base of that tree. There's twenty-five percent number. Unfortunately, when I was explaining what was going to happen with the root zone of that tree, I used a number with Katie. And I said, from a, from sort of a very basic arborist standpoint, if the, if the root zone of an existing tree is impacted by twenty-five percent or more, that's when the tree itself will be stressed. That was the number I used as an explanation to the situation, but it doesn't apply to this tree. So if you look at the root zone for this tree, it's established, it extends across this part of the neighbor's driveway. Certainly, it is absolutely interdicial. There's no question about that. But the additions that you've got here, if you look up, basically, you look up to where the drip line of the tree is, that's essentially where the roots are.
Okay.
So the impact of that tree is certainly nowhere near twenty-five percent. What I had indicated was if it gets to that point, that's when trees certainly start to get stressed. So that was one thing I just wanted to clarify. The second thing, in my conversations with Brian, this started back last year, we were discussing, we were discussing the, the existing bushes that are there that Mr. Ragoni has identified numerous times here. In addition to engineering having no specific concerns with respect to accessing Lake Street, they did mention to Brian at some point that the, because the site triangle is created by these, is obviously negligible at this point. Engineering had mentioned that there's a chance that they may require, public works rather, may require some of those to be, some of that planting to be removed, so it's a safer corner. That was just something that's come up, you know, in the process. Not desirable from the homeowner's standpoint either, but that is something that might be impacted here. And I think it's important to note that as that driveway comes out now, that sixteen-foot width, certainly, obviously, a good portion, you know, sixteen-foot width of that would be, would be removed. I think that the discussion as it relates is valid, the way that Mr. Ragoni identified percentage of driveway widths, right? So his, his driveway for his three-car versus his lot width, yes, obviously, that's, as a percentage, is smaller. I think that reinforces just the challenges that this lot faces if he uses a percentage and discusses how wide this driveway is as it compares to that lot frontage. Yeah, it's a high percentage, there's no question. That speaks to how challenging this lot is and the difficulties associated with trying to, you know, make something functional and safe here.
Hi. Hi, my name is Katie Garfinkel.
Okay, could you, could you please spell it so we may have it for a record?
G A R F I N K E L.
Okay.
This is, yeah. Well, I've got a lot to say, but I think I'll just focus mostly on the why we're not parking on Lake is one thing I just wanted to talk about. Specifically, in terms of winter, is where I want to focus on our kids' safety. We have an eighteen-month-old and a five-year-old. The five-year-old just tends to run out of the car if we would let him. So the snow on this side of the house with, you could see in like your other shot, the, the, the shade kind of comes onto this side. So the snow stays on the north side of the house really easily, and so the snow is going to stay there forever. So for us, there's no door on this side, so we have to go around to any other way through that snow if we go through the grass, through that door right there. So we have to go through the front way anyways. So we're going all the way to East Prairie to get to the front anyways. So we don't want to park on this side, so we park on East Prairie. But then we've got, on April twelve, Sam's brother was hit by a car in front of our house, trying to get to our house. His path over seder, his, sorry, his car was hit because he was slowing down to turn, and the person that hit him said, well, you were slowing down. Yes. Then I was working in my office about three weeks ago, and another car accident happened right in front of Williamsburg Village. I don't know what happened, but I heard a screeching and somebody hitting it. Like, we're just not comfortable with our kids needing to get out of the car on East Prairie. It's just making us feel very unsafe. So we're hoping to be able to get the garage onto our property so that we can make that happen.
Brian, if, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Just a comment to staff here. I mean, if there's a lot of speeding in this area, can't we put stop signs around there to get this fixed? I mean, I've had instances in my vicinity where I live where people have been hit by cars, and then they finally put up stop signs. I mean, if this is a stretch where people are just, you know, gassing it down that road, why don't we have stop signs on it or speed bumps or something?
I know the engineering division reviews if there's, if there's accidents in certain intersections, they looked at stop signs. You know, the speed limits, I know I reviewed on occasion, I believe some of it's based on, I believe, feedback from the engineering division and the police if there's speeding citations. But extra stop signs would have to be initiated by the engineering division based on car crash reports and hitting so many per either year, two years, or in a certain cycle, and then that necessitates more of a study and review. And then they look at where they could, where, where they could actually add them and in what locations so they're not completely just stopping traffic, going, stopping traffic and going, so you're keeping some traffic flow.
It's like if the petitioner, you know, this is an issue, I mean, they could go to the traffic engineering division then, and that would be considered.
It, it could, it definitely could be requested to be looked at based on accident reports in the area up and down East Prairie.
All right, thank you.
I, I do have a question for the petitioners. Looks like on the, on the west side of the house, you guys have a super-nice patio that I saw in the, in the packet. On the south side of the house, you say you like to congregate there, but is, is there another reason why you, we wouldn't want to consider having the garage, I mean, look, a two-car garage on the south side, other than the exit onto East Prairie that we talked about?
Mostly, we just want to have more space for the kids to be able to play over there, and then also just the snow, honestly, that it stays on the north side over there. It really does in the winter, it stays there longer, so we haven't really been able to have our kids play over there as much, yeah.
And I can speak to that as well. My name is Sam Garfinkel, S A M G A R F I N K E L. I, I don't think you get a great sense, looking at this, at just how little the amount of space would be if you put a garage, primarily because it gets very arrowed here, so there wouldn't be room for a playset down here or something like that, which I remember from when we had someone, you know, sketch out something for the sound set, so that was one of the main reasons for that as well.
Thank you.
You know, it would seem, just with the snow, that like, let's say there's a blizzard and you get six inches of snow or a foot of snow, that East Prairie would be, probably be plowed the quickest, right, over Lake? So if you're pulling into East, you know, if your driveway, if your garage goes into East Prairie, wouldn't that be just a little bit easier? Because the street's more, most likely going to be plowed sooner than on Lake. Or, I don't know, just a thought. I mean, like, if they were to put, if staff was to put up stop signs on the corners there, would that make it more, would that, you know, make you more inclined to, you know, build the garage within compliance of the zoning code?
I'm not so much concerned about that.
It's like the thing with the zoning board, I mean, we, I think we're very reasonable and open to, you know, different requests, but at the same time, we also look like, could this be done within the bounds of the zoning code? And the safety thing, I mean, I don't like to mess around with safety, that's huge, and especially, you know, you have two young kids. And, I mean, it seems like a lot of this could be, you know, safety is tied to as well. And just curious, I mean, I, again, these are hypotheticals, but I mean, if staff was able to put up stop signs or maybe a speed bump or two, would that make it a little bit easier for you or, you know, change your mind?
Yeah, engineering, engineering would not approve the use of speed bumps in a right-of-way.
Well, stop signs.
That engineering would have to ultimately review and approve the stop sign locations.
And something I would just add is on the south side, due to where our, like, primary water main is, it actually comes out of the house right here. So we were actually told we could not be able to do an attached garage, I believe. And that was not Andrew who told us that. It was a company that we are not using, so I, I can't say that a hundred percent. And maybe Andrew, you know, maybe that is not true, but that was something that was kind of approached to us as the, on the south side, it would need to be detached.
Because there's a water main?
Water supply for the house?
Yeah.
If that's incorrect, that's incorrect, but yeah.
I'm, I'm not aware of the water service comes into the property.
Yeah, Commissioner Kirkpatrick would like to say something? Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Oh, press the button and, on the page. There you go, that one's on.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I just wanted to mention that my driveway doesn't get any sun in the winter either. And I'm just telling you that if you put it where there's no sun and it stays cold, you, it's icy. The, the snow never melts, and you, I'm just saying that if that's an issue for you, you should be putting it on the other side of the house because, you know, I'm just saying that, that if that's an issue, I mean, and I can't move my driveway, and I wish I could.
I think the aspect, the, the location of the, the structure on the south of the existing house is more tied to whether stop signs get put, put in or not. I have no, I have no engineering experience. Brian might be able to talk to that. I don't know how many, what sort of, what speeds need to be, have been achieved, where people are exceeding the speed limit, how many accidents are there. I don't know logically how that would work from an engineering standpoint, traffic engineering standpoint, as to how, how often accidents need to happen to put a stop sign there. So assuming that that's a challenge, then the question still remains, you know, reversing out onto East Prairie. As Mr. Ragoni noted, there are certainly, there are other, there are other homes that are doing that now. It's not as though that's a, something that isn't occurring currently. But I think what Sam mentioned is, is somewhat instructive as well. While, and then maybe it's even a little bit easier to see as it sort of relates to it, so certainly the property line there. Certainly, you know, what seems like middle's a space up there, but it's not technically, it isn't the home, like it's like. So a structure that would sit in here, basically, while my numbers bear bore out how, literally, how quite large this lot is, because the things we're doing were way under all those three important coverage, FAR and PURVIS and the root area. Sitting the structure right here basically leaves you with a triangle down here that while square footage-wise, pretty reasonably sized, it's just, I mean, it's not, when you're out there sitting there, because we did, I looked at it briefly. Someone else before me had looked at it more concretely. And Mr. Ragoni's plan certainly makes it seem as though there's a lot of space there, but once you get down to it and once the landscaping is all, the trees are all in there, it really doesn't. It effectively splits, it splits the lot where you have, you know, an amount of space here of which that portion is not homeowners' land, and then you left a little triangle down here. So there's really an addition on this side of the property. Basically, it almost eliminates all the other space. It doesn't, but it effectively feels like that when you're out there.
And on the north side, there's like a, we have a pipe that comes out of the ground, too. There's like some weird things out there that aren't really safe for the kids.
Are, are they like utility easements or something like that, or?
It can be, that could be potentially.
Well, the- The westernmost eight feet of the property, which wasn't originally part of the property when it was built in fifty-six, fifty-seven, that, as you can see from the survey, that's, that's vacated. There is, there's underground utilities in that area. So there is, I, I wasn't on the site, I was around the site. I'm not sure what is popping up in that area, but there's definitely, east, westernmost eight feet is definitely for, was vacated in, for utilities.
That eight-foot was vacated along with the street next to my house.
Okay.
The, they received, the property owner receives the eight-foot, but the village maintained an easement. There is a sewer going all the way down that eight-foot right-of-way, excuse me, property, all the way to East Prairie. So the village maintains, and, and that sewer runs through now my property, prior to Central Park Street. So they have a, a large easement in case that sewer should ever- Could I add one thing? I mean, as I said to you all, I generally-
Yeah, please, if, if we can avail yourself of the microphone there, that'd probably be more helpful.
I general contracted my own home, so I know quite a bit about building. You can see from the sketch that I presented to you that a garage can be built on the south side. There are obstacles regardless of where you build. Where they're proposing to build, they are going to be eliminating several windows. They're going to have to eliminate at least one window well that I'm aware of. They're going to have to move the air conditioner. So my point is, builders deal with this all the time. They have to move structures in order to accomplish the edifice that they want to accomplish. My point in providing you the sketch is there is a valid alternative for the desired garage. And given the extraordinary relief sought on that legal setback, from my perspective, I'm biased, the, the answer is obvious, so.
Would you be opposed if, you know, we didn't grant the variation and they built the garage going out onto Lake, the, the East Prairie Street? Would you be opposed to a stop sign or two on that street?
No, no. I, I understand, I've lived there for almost forty years. I understand fully the traffic, and I'm sympathetic to, to the kids. I, I would, I don't need to remind this board that when you make these tremendous decisions, as I mentioned in my statement, in my forty years there, they are either the fourth or the fifth property owners. Therefore, when you make these decisions, you can't, you, you, we all try to be sympathetic, but you can't make it in that moment of time. Somebody else will own this house eventually. It could be an elderly couple or whomever. So these decisions are made forever, as it was in nineteen forty-six when they gave them the addition, the, the initial variation for this substandard lot. So I hope I'm not sounding, I'm just trying to round things out. I don't mean to sound lecturing or anything like that.
No, that's, that's quite all right. And, and like you said, I mean, that covenant would run with the land, so it is in perpetuity. So, you know, when, when something like this is done, it's done forever. Anybody else have any questions for either Mr. Ragoni and, and his folks or for the petitioners at all? Corporation counsel? You had, oh, I thought you were getting ready to say something.
I would just say that, you know, stop signs aside, that's not going to be decided tonight. There's not going to be any stop signs, so.
Yeah, that's-
I would just leave that out.
That's not within our purview, whatever. That's not, that's not-
I just want the petitioners to know that we're not promising stop signs.
Yeah, that's, that's not within our purview to do so anyway. Anything you'd like to finish up with, Mr. Vandemore? I, I don't, I don't know what else could be said. That hasn't been said already.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that the request for a zoning variation to permit the construction of a one-story attached garage addition at eighty-nine fifty East Prairie Road, Skokie, Illinois, resulting in a five-foot front yard setback be granted, subject to the following conditions. That the proposed one-story attached garage addition resulting in a five-foot front yard setback along the north property line, which by definition acts more like a corner side yard, is appropriate given the unique circumstances of the property and prior ZBA variations. Which by definition acts more like a corner side yard is appropriate, given the unique circumstances of the property and prior ZBA variations. There are no adjacent lots sharing a front line along Lake Street, making a direct comparison of encroachment difficult and less relevant in this specific context. A specific factor in granting this variation is, is the preferable access from Lake Street for parking as opposed to East Prairie Road. Lake Street is a dead-end street serving only a few homes, making vehicular ingress and egress from the garage significantly safer than backing out onto East Prairie Road. More major north-south thorough, thoroughfare in Skokie. The requested variation is the minimum necessary to afford relief and enable the reasonable use of the property while addressing safety concerns. Granting this variation with the stipulated conditions will not be detrimental to the public wel- welfare or improvement, other improvements to the neighborhood. And the conditions of approval would be that the attached garage addition shall be constructed at a minimum of five feet from the north. Property line as depicted in the submitted plans. The driveway width. Within the public right of way leading to the garage shall be limited to a maximum of sixteen feet as revised by the petitioner after consultation with the adjacent neighbors. All constructions shall adhere to the site plan updated, submitted by the applicant, reflecting the reduced driveway width and proposed garage location. Um, and I'd, I'd also, I'd like to say that, um. To document that the, that the petitioner will share in the special assessment with an unspecified amount. And that, uh, non-site line related, um, uh, landscape damage be mitigated. If that, if those are okay to, to add into the, as a condition.
I believe they are.
Family concerned with being an unspecified amount.
That, yeah, that, that we cannot quantify what that amount would be.
I mean, what legal effect does it do? You don't put a number on it?
Okay.
From a legal standpoint, huh?
Okay. Um.
Well, I mean, I, I did.
From, from.
Well, I, I guess the question would be going paying it forward, would there be any?
I mean, isn't that an agreement between two private parties? There's not a public interest in that, so why would that even be in the motion?
Yeah.
That's between private individuals, it's not of government interest.
Okay.
That it, that's, the special assessment would have to be modified to then include.
Mm-hmm.
The.
What does that have to do with us?
Applicants.
That's a contract between private parties, correct?
And, yeah, well, then, and then the other thing too is with the, with the shrubbery that would have to do with the, the sightline that we're talking about.
Well, yeah, the, the removal of the shrubbery would fall under all of their codes and ordinances in a, for a sight distance triangle.
Right.
Where a driveway intersects a public right of way.
Aren't we not just granting the, the very, uh, we're voting on granting the variation, that's it, right?
Well, with, with particular conditions that Commissioner Worth is, is noting right now.
Yeah, but with, with, with that, with that discussion, and thank you for that, I mean, I, the, the special assessment, I mean, thank you for, um, for, for noting that, I guess. Uh, due to the unspecified amount, um, I, I will not include that as well as the, um. The, 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 the tree damage mitigation, I, I do think is important though, so, I mean, that, that I would like to, to maintain as a condition.
That's fair, yeah.
Okay. Right. Okay, I have a, uh, but before we vote on Commissioner's worth, on Commissioner Worth's, uh, motion. I want to talk to the, to the garden, uh, to, uh, the petitioners and to Mr. Venimore. Would you be okay with all of these conditions that Commissioner Worth is reading in to? For, for the granting of your, of your request? You would be. Okay, okay. Alright, I have a motion to grant with the conditions as Commissioner Worth has stipulated. Do I hear a second on this? Okay, Commissioner Solovy, seconds. Um, that being said, the chair will go ahead and call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Solovy. Commissioner Putrus? Okay, Commissioner Kirkpatrick? Epstein, uh, let's see, Commissioner Jacobson? You abstain? Uh, Commissioner Worth?
Yes.
Commissioner Arden?
No.
And the chair's going to vote no. So in the case of twenty twenty-five zero-three Z. The, the, uh, the, the motion to grant the petitioner's request has not passed. Uh, we had two I-votes, three nay votes and two abstentions, so it does not pass. So that's, that's the end of the situation. Corporation Council, what does petitioner need to know from here on out?
I'll just say this is considered a final hearing body, so there's no more remedies in the village of Skokie, you'd have to go to the circuit court. For this decision to be reviewed.
Okay. That's it? That's all I, that's all we, that's all we have to say, so. Um. That being said, I, I realize that you folks haven't lived there for very long, you know, uh, I would, I would say, uh. You know, do, do your best and I, that's, it's a unique property, no question about it, but I think there's probably other ways that can. Obviously. Fulfill your, what your needs are, so. Alright, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, okay, so we're going to move along here. Uh, looks like we have no meetings in June, uh, either June fourth or June eighteenth. So staff, uh, would we be looking possibly at a first meeting in July?
Uh, potentially.
Potentially.
Not, nothing, nothing submitted at this point.
And nothing as of yet. Okay, uh, if there, there's nothing else then, then this, uh, being of the village of Skokie zoning board of appeals is adjourned, thank you very much.
He abstained from, uh.